Good morning. It's eight thirty, and I'm going to call the August twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, Clay County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
Have motion, have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We also have the sheriff here with us. We've had a very generous donation to our Clay County Office K-9 program. Sheriff, would you like to recognize our generous donors?
Yes, I'd just like to thank the Morehead American Legion Post Twenty-One for their generous donation of twelve thousand eight hundred dollars to the Sheriff's Office K-9 program. This stemmed from a raffle that they had done and assisted us with, and the raffle was very successful. The funds will be used towards just anything related to the program, whether it would be any type of equipment, any type of training that they need to do, any type of, sometimes there's some technology that we have to buy for that stuff, or maybe even a replacement dog as well. So there's several things that that's going to be used for, and we couldn't be happier of the partnership that we had with the American Legion.
Thank you, Sheriff. The Legion has always been generous with the K-9 programs for years and other needs, and they're a good partner for law enforcement in our community. So we're grateful for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff.
Next, we have citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens here that want to speak to an issue that's not on the agenda? Steve, we got anybody on line?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Next, approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have motion and a second. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Next, we have a request for approval to fill a vacant Assistant County Attorney position. County Attorney Brian Melton is with us. Morning, Brian.
Morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, as I think most of you already know, Mike Leiser within my office is the most current or was appointed as the next judge here in Clay County and will fill that vacant position. So we're obviously very happy for him, but it is a big loss for our office and for the county, and so we want to congratulate him, and I know he'll do great things moving forward, but we are asking to fill that vacant position. It is already budgeted.
Any questions for Mr. Melton?
Move approval.
I'll second the motion and the comment.
Motion and a second. We are going to miss Mike, but he's gone to someplace where he can serve the greater good, really. It's good to see competent people like him get on the bench, and it just makes the system work. So our best wishes to him, and all in favor of the mo—oh, go ahead.
Sorry, thank you. I also want to echo the sentiment. Mike has been really helpful to the Planning Commission as well. Certainly, we've had a lot of hearings, and it's always great to have presence for your office at those meetings. I appreciate you allowing that to happen, but also really excited for a fellow Spud and product of the community. It's really exciting for him, so wish him the best.
Thank you.
Any other comments? If not all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Brian. Okay, next up, request approval for—to allocate remaining public safety funds to the two thousand twenty-five proposed budget.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Before you this morning is just a brief update on page two. You can see the culmination of the actions that this committee board has taken. If you recall, last year, the legislature provided three hundred million dollars in public safety funds. Clay County received nine hundred and forty-two thousand nineteen dollars. There is a Public Safety Committee that met and heard recommendations from our departments and then brought them forward to this board. And so before you this morning is just an update of reminder of what those things were, the projected costs and the dollars that were actually spent for those—for each of those projects. A couple of the different positions, a couple of the different things that were provided were two positions in the Sheriff's Department and one position in Restorative Justice. So obviously, there's still funding available with those positions through the remainder of this year. There's also three hiring bonuses, totally nine thousand dollars, that should those deputies remain here, they would be eligible for those funding dollars here in September and then in March of next year. When we—when our committee got together again, reviewed all this information, and projected what that spending would be in those three positions and the bonuses, we projected that we'd have thirty-two thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars remaining, again depending on overtime, but the request before the commission would be to take any remaining dollars, whatever that dollar amount would be, and to apply that towards the Sheriff's Department budget for two thousand twenty-five to offset any potential levy increases. With that, I yield for any questions.
Question is for Steve. Mr. Campbell?
Yeah, the—excuse me, the Public Safety Committee did meet, and Steve just expressed what our wishes were and recommendation was to use that for that purpose, so I would—I would move to approve the request.
I'll second the motion, but also—
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. I, one, I want to first applaud the staff and the department heads and the commissioners that took part in this conversation. I think it really was an opportunity to get creative and look at what the local need was for these funds, so, one, I'm grateful for the legislative appropriation. Certainly, the teamwork to figure out where the best fit was is important, but I will say in the last week, I've had conversations with residents applauding us for utilizing these funds in such a way. And if you look through how we've delegated this from the Attorney's Office and the Restorative Justice component to the Sheriff's Office and the K-9, there's so many different areas where the citizens have recognized that need. And particularly, you know, when you hear about departments in struggling times, you know, I think we're trying to do our best to make sure that we give our employees the tools they need to be the most successful in the community, and really grateful for the opportunity to have these funds particularly. So thanks for the work that you all did to make sure it was allocated in this way, and certainly support the request.
Commissioner Campbell and I worked with staff and the sheriff on this, and, again, staff came up with great recommendations to where we can not only impact the needs of public safety here in the county, but we can also address some issues with our levy to bring down some of the—some of the cost on taxpayers. So it was a pleasure to work with Commissioner Campbell and the staff on this and the sheriff. We have motion and—oh, go ahead.
I—I don't—I don't think we should—I don't think you meant to intentionally, but Brian Melton was also a key component to this, and when it comes to the aide that also went to the law office or the, you know, the county attorney's office as well as Restorative Justice, I think those were key components that Brian also felt strongly about, so.
Sorry, Brian, indeed, and I'm—I've got Restorative Justice in my portfolio if they ever need a commissioner, but that's an essential program, and we get feedback on that, singing the praises of the guy we've got in that spot. So another good expenditure of these funds.
Very much so. I mean, I think we've said it many times before, but I will say it again. It is very much appreciated, and it is very much a terrific program, and that money is, I think, gone, you know, its its purpose has really reached a great deal by funding that and keeping that going. So it's been appreciated.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, we have motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Thanks, Steve.
Mr. Chair, can I go back to a previous item here? When we—when we went—when Brian asked us to fill the Assistant County Position, County Attorney Position, were we looking at backfill?
I didn't ask for backfill. I don't expect it'll be any—it—
Okay.
The work that he's doing, we've kind of already absorbed, and we're going to look to fill really just inter—
Okay, I just—
Basically.
Just wanted to make sure that we—
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Next up, Darren Brooks, our HR Director. We've got the Discussion and Recommendation on Implementation of the Market Study Findings.
All right. Big day.
The blazers on.
I think everybody's been waiting for this, and I'll be glad when it's over. Thanks for having me today. This is a briefing on the findings of the compensation study. I think you have the—a copy of the slides in your packets as well, and then we have it up on the boards for the public and the employees to see as well. First off, just a little bit of history on this. As you know, in two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty, we did a market study as well with David Drowne Associates, and at that time, they recommended a five-point-four-two percent increase on top of the two percent COLA that had already been negotiated with the unions, which was giving us a seven-point-four-two percent increase. As you also probably recall, the market study was implemented about three months before COVID hit, and so there was a much different workforce prior to COVID than there is right now. And so the board had said that we were going to do these market studies every four or five years, and I think that is a wise decision, especially in this atmosphere. Back in two thousand twenty, we had twenty-two positions that were deemed below market value, and those grades were increased accordingly. And as you know, the union contracts that we have recently signed, they go from two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-five, so we still have one more year on the union contracts, and that's all of—all nine of them. But during those negotiations, we decided that you promised the market study would be done during that time, and this is the result of that. A little bit of background on David Drowne. Well, first off, the COLAs that we've had for the last three years is four percent, three percent, and three percent for next year. A little bit of background on David Drowne. We had Tessa Melvin did our market study. She did our last one as well, so she was very familiar with our organization and our positions. She's worked for DEA for quite a few years and worked for nearly thirteen years in county government and city government. She has a Classification and Compensation Service area, and earned her Doctorate in Public Administration at Hamlin University with an emphasis on city development and planning. So she's very versed in doing these market studies as well. And let me get to the next slide. So as of this date, we've had numerous phone calls with David Drowne Associates and Tessa regarding the study. Before the study started, we had all of the department heads update their PDQs, which they did, which was very helpful as well. And since the start of the market study, we've had three closed sessions to discuss the results and also to receive board guidance on where you wanted to go with this. The market analysis for two thousand twenty-four shows that our current grid was calibrated at five percent under-market average minimum rates and two percent under-market average maximum rates and five percent under-market actual—actual rates. I will show in a later slide that there have been several comparable counties that are doing market studies this year, and so the results of this market study are a snapshot in time, and I can't stress that enough because the market is very flexible and moving a lot right now. And I'll show you on a slide going forward how many counties and cities are doing market studies this year. So some of the things that we have to consider are other counties' pay philosophies, where they are in the market, difficult positions to fill, retention issues, tax base, all of that goes into how a county determines what their market study is going to be and how much they're going to give. Also, taking into effect their counties and how they decide their market studies. Some implement them all at once, some implement them over the course of a year, and if some counties are way below market, then they may—they may take a couple of years to get back up to market, so. And I put that out there because there's a lot of ways to do a market study and a lot of things to look at. So from our two thousand twenty market study, as you can see, the board has pretty much done what it wanted to do and keep up and kept up with the market as we were going forward based on the COLAs that you were giving out for the past couple of years. So with any market study, we have benchmarks, benchmark counties. Some of them are cities that are location-wise close to us, and so this is a list of the benchmarks that we used for our study. The list contains nineteen counties and cities, and these are the same cities and counties that we used last time. This time, we did add Stearns County, which is a bigger county than ours, but we thought that it more closely represents where we are in relation to Fargo as well. So it kind of takes that into consideration as well. Some of these counties are bigger than Clay County, some are smaller, but everything with a double asterisk, as you can see on there, which is—there's ten of them, those counties are actually doing market studies this year as well. So like I said, this is a shot in time for when our market study data came back. Some of the things that we looked at are the entities that surround us. What are they giving for COLAs and everything, where their market study is? Indicators include tax capacity, population, revenues, expenditures. All of that goes into determining what kind of a benchmark county and city that we—we are going to compare ourselves to. These were the benchmark positions that we looked at. There's forty-eight of them in total, and we picked those because these are the positions that are very closely resembles other counties. So for instance, a deputy in Clay County is very much resembles a deputy in Otter Tail or some of the other counties. These are positions that most other counties have, so we want to get the best data from as many other counties and cities as possible. So these positions were determined and approved by the board when we first started the market study that these would be our benchmark positions. There are a few positions that not all counties have. For instance, our detox positions and our juvenile detention positions, not all counties have those two organizations, and so they had to go outside to private sector to look at some of those positions as well, and they did do that. When David Drowne does their comparisons, they like to have at least five comparables to make a good representation of where the market is for those each—each of those positions. Not every position is looked at in the county. We have over one hundred and sixty-three positions, job titles in the county, and so I think the public and the employees have to know that not all one hundred and sixty-three were compared to all county positions in all benchmark counties. So that's why we had the forty-eight that most closely resembles all the other counties. And please stop me if you have any questions at all. This is just a representation of our two thousand twenty-four grid. This is where everybody is right now. This includes the three percent COLA that was given this year from last year's grid. Just as a note, for this market study, we did have eleven positions that were graded differently, and those were dealt with a couple of weeks ago with the board to move those positions right away. For those that did move, most likely, they moved up and then back a step, and so a lot of people— when that happens, whether we have a market study or a grade increase or a position increase or whatever, their years of service is not always going to line up after that. So I just kind of want to throw that out there, just so if people say, well, I've been here six years, but now I'm on grade eleven, step five or four. It's because when you change positions and you go to a different grade, your years of service is probably not going to line up exactly, so I just wanted to put that out there for everybody. Also, in our personnel policy, it does say that if you go up one grade, that you would get at least a one percent increase, and two grades, two percent. So we applied that logic as well, according to the personnel policy. Right now, we have six hundred and eighty-seven employees. We have a lot of employees. We've grown tremendously in the last couple—several years, and ninety-six of those employees are already at step twelve or step thirteen. Just as a reminder, step thirteen is for the deputies—the deputy first-class pay that we give that was negotiated several contracts back. We also have one hundred and twenty-two of those employees currently at step one. Like I said before, we're five percent under-market minimum rate at this point and two percent under-market maximum rate. By making this switch for those eleven positions, we helped out the grid, so we weren't quite as low as what we were had we not done that adjustment as well. Let's see here. Those ones that—those positions that were increased, they were increased as of August third, so they'll see that increase on this coming Friday's pay—pay step. As we were going through this market study, we also realized that we had two other positions that were below ninety-three percent, and that would be the Correctional Sergeant and the HR Coordinator. And so I'd also like to have a motion to move those two positions one grade at the end of this as well, and they would be moved according to the grid and the personnel policy, and then make that effective August third as well, so that—we can do that at the end as part of a motion. So getting to the actual two options that were given to us. Option one is very similar to what we did last time. Option one was to add three percent to the COLA, which would make it six percent total, and that would be applied to the entire grid. The cost of that is approximately one million seven thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars. It would give all the employees the same increase. The negative is it is a big tab to pay all at once, starting on January first, and—but it does immediately impact the grid and assist with new people coming in and attracting new talent to Clay County. If we were to do this as we did the last two thousand twenty market study, we would be at the benchmark average, and we would be three percent above the market benchmark maximum average. So if you go back and remember, we have ten other counties and cities that are doing market studies. I think this would certainly help us keep ahead of—that to some extent. We did have a—this was the option one. We did have another option two, but during some of the meetings that we had, we kind of deemed that option two was not going to be beneficial for the employees. What that was is to add three percent per step, and as we go forward, just making it standard three percent, after we did the calculations and everything, actually, some of the employees would be losing money, and so we kind of threw that option out at this point. Our third option was to add one step to the end of the grid, and then or cut one step at the beginning of the grid and add one step to step twelve. So our step one would become our—our step two would become our step one. There's an immediate cost to this, but it's not all equal. This mostly impacts the new employees at step one and the long-term employees at step twelve. The implementation to the grid for this option would be four hundred and—approximately four hundred and sixty-five thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars. And when I say approximate, you know, we're going to have still a lot of movement between now and the end of the year. So—but that was the number that David Drowne Associates came up with. And so all of this would kick in the first pay period of two thousand twenty-five, which is like the last week in December. Let me see if I missed anything here. I don't think so. So questions and discussion?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Darren, for that. I want to start off going back to the benchmarks and the locations that we used, and I—I know that Commissioner Mojo was the one who suggested we should include Stearns County, not necessarily because it matches up with Fargo, but it gets us to looking towards the metro area.
Correct.
Because when we start looking at wanting to have, you know, save our employees and have retention here, we need to pay attention to what's going on to the east of us. So including that, I think that was—that was kind of a goal of having Stearns, and I'm sure that probably brought the numbers up a bit.
Yep, and I remember that conversation with Commissioner Mojo that, you know, that's along that ninety-four corridor where, you know, where we draw our people from could certainly be in the Stearns County area as well.
And then I have a couple more things. Then, just on going to the employees, when you say six hundred and eighty-seven, does that include our variable hours?
Yes, it does.
And how many of those do we have?
I don't have an exact count, but we usually run about one hundred and fifty.
And a lot of those, it's in our juvenile detention and—
Yep, most of them are in juvenile detention. A large portion of them are in juvenile detention. I think Corrections might have some detox uses, and those are—the three departments that use the variable hours the most.
And then going to—getting into the couple of options that are here, and I said it—I said it earlier in some of our meetings between option one and option three. I think—I think option three would be putting a Band-Aid on something that probably would not work in the long term. I think option one is the way to go. And, you know, we talk about—we made a commitment to the whole team, the all employees of the county that we would do this wage study, and for us to do that wage study and then just to put a Band-Aid on it would not be right. And, you know, so I think option one is certainly the way we should go. I do have a—I just have a question on your presentation. So, you know, because we have a three percent COLA already planned for two thousand twenty-five, right?
Correct.
And then—and then this one would be—the wage study action would be to add three percent to the—
To the—
Cross the board to the grid.
Correct.
But they would be two separate actions. It wouldn't be one six percent. It'd be a three percent for the wage study adjustment—
Right.
And then the three percent COLA. Which order does that go in?
Well—
I don't know—I don't know if it makes—
I don't—I don't know if it really makes—
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Campbell, in this case, because they're both three percent, it wouldn't—it wouldn't matter.
Yeah.
All right. So I didn't know if we had to specify in any—
Yeah.
What motion we would make, because it's not six, it's three and three.
Right, it's three and three.
And be slightly different.
And from what I've been seeing through my HR channels, three percent is becoming pretty common that other counties are given, both for this year and next year. So I think we're still going to be in line with what other counties are given. I mean, I'm not seeing fives and sixes and sevens out there, at least the input that I'm getting from other HRs, but three percent and then the three percent mark— the 3% market study. So when you see a county that says they gave 8%, but they had a market study, that might not be 8% as part of the market study. It could be, like we are, 3% and then 3%.
But the action we would do today, or what presumably that we would be doing would be to deal with the market study 3%?
Yes.
Effective January 1.
Correct, because the, the?
Because COLA isn't decided until December.
Correct. COLA would be decided at the final meeting.
Which is already in some contracts.
Correct. And that, those, all the contracts have 3% for next year. That is correct. So.
Thank you. That's.
Any other comments? Commissioner Kravenoff?
Well, just briefly, I totally echo Commissioner Campbell's comments, especially in that piece about the option 1, it being the right way to go. And the other, again, I strongly agree. It's just a Band-Aid and a bad road to go down. So, fully support that.
Yeah, option 1 was what was initiated last time, and that basically put us in a good position this time around to meet the promises we made our employees and still responsibly bring the salaries up to where we're competitive in the market too. So I think option 1 is a wise choice. Commissioner Mojo?
Thank you. I just want to echo the comments that the board has had. This certainly has been a process, and Darren and the team, thanks for the work, the long work it's taken to get here, to fulfill the promises that was made during negotiations, certainly. You know, I, it's been an interesting few years in the HR world in regards to hiring and advertising for employment, employees. And I think we avoided the quick knee-jerk reaction by not doing a market study a year after the pandemic, to wait it out a little bit, to kind of have some of those hiccups work out. And there certainly still are challenges in regards to what the private sector can offer versus what the public sector does. But I'm hoping that this closes that gap. I'm certainly hopeful that because we did include Stearns County, some of the metro counties now that are 100% virtual, to where people don't necessarily have to live in a highly populated area, they can work from anywhere in an area, helped us align a little bit with maybe that market pool. And agreed, I, you know, budgets are tricky, and it's a tricky year, certainly. There is a lot of challenges in regards to the economy and how much it costs a family to go get one meal at a grocery store certainly has gone up. And so while we recognize that our employees are facing those challenges as well, it's also important for us in this position to be cognizant of what the taxpayer burden is as well. So I don't want to leverage and make that equal on the backs of our employees, which is why I support option 1. But as we move into the next month, to cognizantly look at the budget, I think is important as well. So thanks for your work to get us to this point, and I'm hopeful that this will be helpful.
And I think some of the things that the board has done has truly helped, you know, with the public safety funds was helpful, with the remote work. We have a lot of people that come in now and say, do you offer remote work? So that's a selling point as well for our recruiting efforts. The recruitment bonuses and stuff, I mean, all of that added all together has really helped in recruitment and retaining employees.
Mr. Chairman?
So, the two positions that we, we had 11, and there were two more that we found that needed some adjustment. What were those two?
It was correctional sergeants and HR coordinator.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we, and what are we moving them to, Darren, to?
The HR coordinator goes to 19, and the correctional sergeants go to 17. I think it's 17. I'll double check that.
Okay, but, so?
They, they?
But I guess what I want to do is, I want to do the same for, we want to do the same for those two, what we did for the other 11, and make that effective August 1st. Whatever that, you know, so my motion would be whatever that?
Reflect the action.
You know, whatever that, where it goes on the grid?
Yep.
It matches.
Yeah, we would, we would apply the same mentality of?
Yep. So, so I guess my first motion would be to do that one, those two positions, to move them up effective August 1, similar to the other 11 positions we did earlier.
It would be August 3rd. That would be the?
Okay, whatever. August 3rd?
August 3rd.
Okay. That's my motion.
You're going to have to keep it separate from the?
Yep.
Okay?
I'll second that motion.
Have motion to second. Any further discussion on the movement of the correctional sergeants and HR coordinator? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Then, Mr. Chair, based on the Wade study that we've done, I would move that we move forward with the option 1 proposal, which would give an additional 3% market adjustment effective January 1.
But it's easier to say the first payroll of 2025.
Okay, okay. First payroll of 2025. Thank you.
I'll second that.
A motion to second. Further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Darren. Steve?
Thank you.
We have Dale Arnold, district supervisor with probation, and he has his budget presentation. Welcome, Dale.
Thank you. Well, I've seen some other departments put together a presentation. I'd seen some other departments put together a presentation, and they had a PowerPoint with theirs, so I figured I would step up my game a little bit and put something together for you guys. Thanks. I wanted to start out today talking a little bit about the state funding formula, which is something that is new to the state of Minnesota in the last year or two. I don't want to get too much in the weeds on this, but I wanted to give just a brief overview of kind of how it works, so that we can kind of make it make sense, so to speak. So the purpose of the community supervision funding formula is to reimburse expenditures tied to community supervision and community-based programming and services for persons involved in the justice system. So what that means is that, for the purpose of refunding the counties, they had to put together a formula so that it was done equitably. And so the way that they have done this is they take the number of clients that are on supervision in each county, times this capitated rate. And this capitated rate is put together, it is the average salary of all of the corrections employees in the state, times the number of probationers on supervision in the state, and then times 3, then times 365. And they get like this average number. And then, and then they take, and then plugging that back into the state funding formula, you take that times 365, and then the county is responsible, essentially, for 50% of that number. And this state funding formula is put together biannually. And so they, they come up with this capitated rate every two years, and then they update the numbers for each, each county. And so in 2022, we had 202 misdemeanor cases and 76 juvenile cases, for a total of 278 in the county. The numbers today reflect a little bit higher numbers for both misdemeanor and juvenile cases. So you could probably anticipate that in 2024, when they redo the state funding formula, that the number would slightly increase. And so the return funding for each one of the counties is now done in monthly installments. And when you plug in the numbers specifically from Clay County, you'll find that the total ends up being like 520,000. And then, so the county is billed back those, or paid back in monthly installments to equate that 261,348 annually. There's some, some other things that are included in that formula, such as there's some administration pay, some HR pay, and that's also included, which will, I'll show you here in just a minute. The state also funds some IT services, some agency events, and they offset some transportation costs that are not included in that formula as well. And you can see, I kind of put together some data there for felony supervision as well, which is not associated with the county. And so in 2022, there were 537 on felony supervision, and then 117 on supervised release or parole. So 654. And so that's our revenue. We get the 261,348 based on that funding formula. And then we also, on average, generate about 6,000 supervision fees, which I'll discuss kind of where those supervision fees go here on the next slide. So there were some changes in the department. In 2023 and 2024, we had one agent in the department retire, and that resulted in some changes. And we also had one juvenile agent move over to a state-funded position, and that has really adjusted some of the numbers here that I'll talk about. And so the salaries for the budget for 2025 proposing a 5.6% increase, that's mostly due to COLA and the insurance increases. The STS program hasn't changed, and that's contracted with the DOC at 75% as well. Health insurance, there's a significant decrease, and that's due to one of, two of the employees, one being moved over to the state funding source, and then one employee retiring. And you'll see that kind of aligned with para, social security, and then for some reason, which I cannot explain, that Medicare has increased slightly, even though those two employees have moved. Rent for the contracted employees, the building is included on there. And then there's the juvenile offender restitution program, JORP, and that's where this, the 6,000 in supervision fees that we receive in revenue has been rolled up and kind of given back. And what that allows us to do is if there's a juvenile who's placed on probation and owes any amount of restitution to a victim, we use some of those, some of that revenue so that the juvenile may complete community service, and then we use that revenue to pay back the restitution to the victim. And so that's been a very big benefit. 600 for drug testing, travel, auto repair, conference registration and training has slightly increased to $200. Telephone translator decrease. I think technology is kind of driving the decrease for the need for a translator, and then obviously the telephone system. Office supplies, small, large, equipment repair, you'll see a small decrease there. And then this is that last part of the state funding formula, the administration, OAS senior support staff and the management for administration. And there's a 10 and a quarter increase there in the proposal. And the reason for that is because the cost of living increase for 2024 was not added, as well as insurance increases for 2024. And so we're including both 2024 and 2025 cost of living increase and insurance increase as well. Any questions about that?
Commissioner Kravenoff?
Yeah, just one, just curious on the two employees you talked about. So one in the state, the other retired. Are you looking to replace those?
Not at the moment. The one, the one employee that moved over to the state was supervising a small juvenile caseload. He had picked up some overflow. The juvenile numbers are creeping up on supervision. You know, we're probably in like that yellow stage, you know, kind of preparing. If it ever crosses into the point where we can't manage it, then maybe we'll have to try to figure something out. But at the current moment, there has been no discussion about that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Dale, and when we went through your, through the, through the budget, one of the areas that we touched on was the decrease in health insurance. Pretty significant there. Your family contribution, your individual contributions are significantly different. Is that, is that where we attribute, or is it just the two positions that haven't been?
I believe it's the two positions. And then, you know, any degree, I don't really know exactly what they invented in terms of what their coverage was offhand, but I would assume you're probably right.
Dale, we appreciate the presentation.
Oh, I still got some more.
Oh, okay.
We'll see the total revenue for 2024, sorry.
No, no problem.
And then the total budget expenses from 2024, 1.27. And so you subtract the revenue from budget expenses, we get 760. 2025 requesting a 4.5% decrease, and that's kind of because of those positions moving and whatnot. I do want to talk a little bit about what's upcoming this year. There's, we have applied for a DWI court position to be implemented in the county. That'll be no cost at the moment to the county. I don't anticipate there being a cost because it's a grant-funded position. And so that, that is exciting. And then we are also going to potentially continue to work on moving the felony office into, into the county building here, which I think as well would be a benefit to the county as well, if we can make that work. The state funding formula is relatively new, and I think over the course of the next five to 10 years, you're going to see this number, this state funding formula kind of go up and down and then eventually balance out. There's also some potential legislative stuff going through, is my understanding anyway, that will also affect how certain counties are maybe potentially doing supervision, and then overall kind of affecting how that will play out. And so I envision that in the years to come, hopefully, we'll see, we'll see some increase in the state funding formula coming our way. That is it.
Well, decrease is always nice. Certainly, I know that the legislature, or legislative work on this is about four years into it. We're finally getting a little motion. I hope I'm not hearing that there's going to be surprises coming up in the next couple legislative sessions, but that's always a possibility with this fairly novel process we have here in Minnesota. It can be redefined with a stroke of a pen, so. Wish us all luck. Thank you for your presentation. Hope, Commissioner Mojo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dale, I just want to speak a little bit to the DWI specialty court. I know that that is something that Judge Rosenfeld has been really wanting to champion here, and I know that there's been a lot of work with your office and others. And just want to thank you for whatever component of help you've provided to that. This board really sees a high value with the specialty courts, the transformative changes that can happen to the individuals that it works with. So we're hopeful that that can become a model for the state. So thank you for your work.
Thank you. Anything else? Well, thank you. Appreciate the presentation. Onto committee reports, and we're going to start with Commissioner Kravenoff. Onto committee reports, and we're going to start with Commissioner Kravenoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So going back to last Tuesday afternoon, we had our board group in the afternoon. We all attended that, having a discussion with HRA and their housing program. I thought they gave a good review. I was happy to see them kind of give a breakdown to their certain projects and knowing more of their challenges why. And certainly as being a liaison to that group, I see what they're trying to build on and the fact that how the time of the pandemic affected them so much when there was a rental moratorium, and they just had a large group of people that weren't paying rent, and then when it came back on, continued to not pay rent. So there are higher evictions than normal, and, and they're recovering from that as well as unfortunately, when people leave places sometimes, and many times, they somewhat destroy the property as they leave. So there's been a lot of work done to rehab those as they get rerented. But again, there, those things are all taking shape, so I fully expect that their revenues will continue to increase over the year or two. They came forward with a potential request to, of levy to be approved by us of around I'm going to just segue so I don't have to talk about it twice. Then two days later, I had, I was the liaison then at their board meeting. There was deeper discussion about what was presented that day, and Steve, I think you may have received it, maybe not, but they passed the resolution. Okay, it'll be coming then. That levy amount that they were talking about, finding funds that were on a state grant that came through first part of April and looking at other savings or other ways of reallocating and working with their projects. So that, that budget levy request, that was 350, dropped to 300. So I think, and that was passed, huh? Oh, okay. All right, very good. So that, that handles that, that group. The next morning, I went to the Wilder Ice Watershed District. They did their budget levy, and there's a slight increase there, but not too bad. I don't have the exact percentage, but it was, so again, they'll be doing a levy up in that direction. And Clay County is about 16%, yeah, 16% of their, of their, of our drainage that goes into the Wilder Ice Watershed. Also, they made approvals on 17 projects, 11 which were drain tile. The weed is harvested and the ground gets open. They get ready to start putting their drain tile in, so that was significant. And then the rest was structures. The after, that afternoon, I had a historical and cultural society retreat. The main purpose of that retreat, we had brought in a facilitator, Maureen Johnson, who's been there for many, many years, is going to be retiring in July of 2025. And so the, the whole purpose of that event, which was about five hours long, was about transition planning, looking at their successes and maybe a little reposition in some positions. And then, and in Per Taylor, Maureen's job, you know, discussion around her, that executive director position, how that might vary a little bit with the next hire. So that, at this point, moves on to our transition group, which I'm not part of, but our executive committee and a couple others are on that. And we will then start looking to get the new hire in place so that when Maureen retires in July of next year, that we're up and running. On the 15th Thursday, I, as a visitor, or a guest, I should say, I listened in on the MetroCog meeting. Commissioner Mojo was at that. I'll let her give more detailed insight on that. And then also on Thursday, I had a, the suicide and substance prevention monthly meeting. Excellent meeting. I was very happy to be part of that or listening in on that. We had a presentation by our new community resource navigator hired by the Moore PD. Her name is Megan Lundberg. I think she's been working now maybe four months right now at Ball Park. Anyway, the, and her purpose of the job is when calls come in dispatch, they're triaged over to her when it involves assistance for mental health. And it just takes a little weight off the PD for handling those type of calls. She's documented 18 calls of service that she's attended to. And since her working with these people in their distress, six of those 18 have not called again, and four others have only called a couple other times, so much fewer than before that. So that job is doing what was intended to do for the Moore PD. She also helped supervision and involvement with the summer youth program that the PD had. Later in the meeting, through, with the county, Roya Beal, Jason McCoy, and Kirsten Lepard, there was mention of a grant that is in place now for resources, and it's a four-year grant that came in from Department of Health, 500 grand, and it's working with 14 youth groups outside schools through sources of strength and other programs to empower kids and keep them hopefully away from making bad choices and, and more importantly, in a way of life that can potentially lead toward greater mental health distress leading to suicide. So anyway, Commissioner Eberger was part of that. So that's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Last week, I also attended the HRA meeting that was well-covered thus far. I attended the board canvassing, election candidacy rather, with Commissioner Campbell to certify the election results in this room. I attended the MetroCog meeting as identified by Commissioner Kravenoff. We approved a GIS specialist employment offer, a attorney engagement letter, and talked about the North Dakota MPO for the ATAC approval, but also approved the BNSF study, which has been a long time coming to get that to where it is. And then yesterday, Commissioner Campbell and I attended the withdrawal management detox facility open house planning meeting. We did talk about a ribbon cutting for our, both the DMV and the detox facility. We're anticipating that being October 1st. So you can all mark that on your calendars. At 1:00, we'll be hosting tours for the chamber and the Morehead Businesses Association after, but also providing the public the ability to see the new facilities. So a lot of work and coordination between all of the different departments. But we're at that meeting, certainly grateful for their help to lift that, but even more grateful for the opportunity to have those facilities up and running for the public. There'll be, you know, a lot of public communication that will come from Jackie on, on coordinating when the DMV at the center mall is no longer and when that move will happen. But that's what we covered at that meeting, and that concludes my reports.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. On August 13th, I attended a diversion slash highway tracking coordination meeting regarding issues related to Reach Four in, on the Minnesota side for the diversion project. Several issues are still outstanding there in Reach Four. That, that part of the project has been awarded by the Corps of Engineers to be constructed. But with that, there are still a couple of components in there that are kind of a critical timeline, and one is a small closure of a road in Holy Cross Township that needs to be done, and there hasn't been an agreement on that yet. And ultimately, you know, Clay County may be asked to step in and assist with, with those needs because that, there's a very small section that will be permanently closed, and that's the area that we're, we're talking about here that needs to be resolved rather quickly. I know Brian Milton was able to be at that meeting, and, and I think he's going to be reaching out on behalf of the county too with, with Holy Cross or their representatives to have that discussion. Then on the 15th, we had the Public Safety Committee meeting, Commissioner Ebering and basically the review was to what do we do with the unallocated public safety dollars? And we acted on that this morning based on that committee's recommendation. And then yesterday, I also attended the open house, open house planning for the withdrawal management and the DMV facility, and Commissioner Mojo also reported on that. And I just want to go back to today a little bit for the actions that we took. I just want to comment to, you know, we've been for the last few months now, we've been looking at every department's budget requests, and, you know, I, I think the action that we took today in regards to the Wade study and our intentions on COLA is this, you know, that's going to be a significant cost to the, to the county, and that can't go unrecognized. In addition to what we're anticipating is the, based on our third year of agreement with Blue Cross, a 9% increase in health insurance. So, you know, so when you look at those two numbers, it's significant. But I just want to point that out, that over and above this, there are still a lot of demands that are coming before the county. And I think what we did today is we prioritized where the money has to go first, and that's taking care of the people who are providing these services for the residents of Clay County, and that's where we need to start. I'm not so sure that all of the other proposals that we've had are going to be probably as, able to, to do. I know we can't be looking at 10 and 12% increases as being sustainable to our taxpayers of Clay County. So I'm just pointing that out, that I think we took a step in the right direction to take care of the most important part of this, and that's our employees. And with that, I'm finished.
Thank you. On Tuesday, the 13th, I attended the, the meeting with our county HRA, which has already been covered. On the 15th, Thursday, I attended remotely the Suicide and Substance Abuse Committee meeting, which has been reported on by Commissioner Kravenoff. One, one thing I want to point out, Annabelle gave a, a presentation on a four-year grant for substance abuse and suicidal issues from the Minnesota Department of Health that is being worked on. I don't believe it's been, the grants come through yet, but she gave an update on a report on that. Later, no, I'm sorry, on the 17th, I attended the Lake Agassiz Regional Library Executive Committee meeting and Finance Committee meeting. We reviewed a salary survey that's been done, and we set up negotiations with ASME, the labor unit for the library out there, and I will be serving on the negotiation committee for that. One of the things the study did show is that the Lake Agassiz employees are way underrated, and we're going to have to look at, at trying to close that gap. So that, that is issues to deal with here in the future. Friday, I went to Detroit Lakes. We had our Partnership for Community Health Board meeting, quarterly meeting there. Agreed on food, pool, and lodging program fees. For the most part, the, the big issues there are with Otter Tail County. It has a huge number of vacation home rentals that they have, that's where some very big fees are attached, and we are just kind of following the, the identified needs of them in setting the, the costs on that. Had a couple of presentations and update on finance and staffing, and nothing really, just kind of general business after that. And that completes my report. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, participated in the HRA. That's been well-covered with the comments of Commissioner Kravenoff and receiving the special benefit tax that their, their board of commissioners signed. I believe they're under the same timeline from a budget standpoint, so we can look to have them coming here in coming weeks. On the 14th, we had Clay County Management. Again, we talked about the 2025 budget, the market study that was addressed here this morning, Strive 2025, and what an intergovernmental retreat may look like next year. The 14th, met with Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Mojo, and the solid waste budget. The 14th also met with representatives from the diversion authority that has been addressed. The 15th, participated in the public safety funding, also MCC, JPA prep meeting. We have a meeting this coming Thursday. There's a number of items that will be addressed there from RIPS, RIMP, excuse me, also some additional, additional water, excuse me, purchases of property that will be addressed, and also some leases. We, on the 15th, met in the afternoon with representatives from the Minnesota DNR, Greg Strowman, Strowman from the Clay County Trail Alliance. We were fortunate enough to be selected as with, as a fiscal review with the DNR as their sponsor. And so the, Greg and, and the Trail Alliance has, have done a great job with the documentation and working with the county. And so just a few minor different things that, that were mentioned, but overall, it was a, it was a good meeting. Again, along with the six other, or five other staff right now that had various NACO Leadership Academy meetings throughout last week. Met with Sheriff Amptin, talked about some hiring challenges and also, or hiring, I guess not challenges, being full staff, and also then vehicle issues that he's continuing to have, both with existing and then also in trying to acquire some of his 2025 vehicles. Yesterday, participated or planned, some department had evaluation prep. We have a meeting scheduled this afternoon with Representative Keeler and Senator Kupac in regards to the PTRF plan moving forward. So we had some prep there. Participated in the open house meetings for the DMV and the withdrawal management. If you see up at the site now, there already are some signs hanging on, on the fences about the opening date. And then yesterday afternoon, I met with Lori Johnson, Otter Treasurer, in additional discussions about the budget. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Ms. Milton, anything for us? Darren? Jackie? Everybody's quiet. Kevin?
Mr. I just, I just follow up from Darren regarding the question I asked regarding variable hour. We have juvenile detention and secure and non-secure as 77 of the 150. Corrections has seven, and detox has 23, and then the rest are scattered throughout the department. So, so there's roughly about 150. Thank you, Darren.
Right. Anything else? We're adjourned.